You're going to call me in the word. And I will take a roll call.
President Plousky.
Here.
Vice President Ardery.
Here.
Mrs. Hoysen.
Here.
Mrs. Inman.
Here.
Mr. Tradent.
Here.
I need approval of the agenda as presented. Take a motion.
Some moved.
Motion Pat.
Second?
Second Patty. Take a roll call.
Mrs. Inman.
Yes.
Dr. Hoysen.
Yes.
Mr. Ardery.
Yes.
Mr. Tradent.
Yes.
Mr. Plousky.
Yes.
I'll turn it over to Mr. Ardery for opening and pledge.
Well, what do you say? We live in unique times that aren't changing. But I think that everybody, especially here in this school, Mr. Montanaro, speaking for our school, and the administrators here, I think are doing an amazing job. And all the staff, and I just want to say how much I truly appreciate it as a parent and one that has students in this school district. You know, I was thinking about this today, actually. No answer is ever a right answer. When you've got to make big decisions, there is no right answer. All you do is you do your very best. And I think that many people, not just here, but around our state and our nation, have really tried to do their best job they could. And I think our school has done a tremendous job, and I mean that. And I appreciate the hard work everybody's done, and I know my kids are adjusting also, and we just want to say thank you. So let's stand and we'll say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, move on to communication reports. Let's leave the A bond.
Ah, the only thing I really have legislative-wise, I've had the opportunity to be able to watch Governor Dwyane today during his, I wasn't sure it was going to be today because I think last week he spoke on Wednesday, so, but sure enough, there it was. And pretty much basically, just as an update, the one takeaway, I mean, I had a tablet there because I expected a whole bunch of numbers and I expected, I was ready to take a lot of notes, but my big walkaway takeaway from what he said today, numbers, of course, are going up in Ohio, going up around the state, cautioned everybody to be really careful over the Thanksgiving holiday, asking for people to celebrate remotely if possible, stay immediate family. And the big, the change was that I, that he came with for today's broadcast was that he was going to close, there's going to be a curfew in place, 21-day curfew. Everything's to be shutting down at 10 o'clock at night and opening back up at 5:00 a.m. in the morning, so, and that's to be in effect for 21 days, so. And of course, they will continue to monitor. Okay? That's what I have.
Yeah, I mean, just a clarification on that, it's actually on the individual and not on the business. So businesses can be open, people can't be open.
Oh, see, the way he made it sound was that they were to be closed as well.
Restaurants can serve after 10:00.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, okay.
It's kind of weird.
No, 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 he did say, obviously, you can go to the hospital.
Grocery store.
Yeah, you can go to places if you need to, but he was like closing, he didn't want people going to like gyms and things like that. So I think it mattered as far as what the, like, if there's an old Mike gym, no. So, yeah, it was the way he made it at least sound today. There was nothing written that I saw, but that's what he sounded like.
All right. Student Jim.
Yes, I have a couple of things. I'm going to read this one to you. This is from Laura Gall, kindergarten teacher. She said, "As a teacher, I just wanted to express how awesome I think my students are doing with the many COVID guidelines. This time has not been easy and lots of unknowns, but the students are doing it with a smile. I am grateful the kindergarten students have the personal space needed to stay socially distanced. They adhere to staying in their space office well, with minimal reminders. We use zombie or ballerina arms to remind us to keep distance between us in the lines. We say goodbye with bows, air high fives, spirit fingers, air hugs, et cetera. We are working on organizing and managing our materials as we cannot share or borrow. They have gotten good at taking turns doing every, everyday tasks such as throwing away garbage, going to cubbies, dismissal, restroom, washing hands. The students are doing well, wearing their mask. There are only minimal reminders of this as well. When they are able to take them off for breakfast and snack, I enjoy seeing their smiles. The classroom looks and feels different, but they are making progress and learning. They have done this, what is already a difficult transition into kindergarten, now with extra guidelines, and they are doing it well. They are aware we do these things to help keep everyone safe and healthy, and they do it with care. They cannot work in groups, but I feel they are making a great bond with each other. I just wanted to give a shout out to my kindergarten class and say how proud I am of them. We are not perfect, but in a time like this, it's important to celebrate the little victories." I thought it couldn't be said much better because that could have been written by any teacher, any grade level, and so on. Then for Mrs. Moody, she has always had some very unusual things, but in September, her students did a reader's theater to learn about the Constitution. The students had parts that required them to sing little bits of current songs to get the point across of what was happening. With King George being mad, the student playing King George had to sing part of Katy Perry's Roar. The students had to create backgrounds using Google Slides to help illustrate their parts. To complete the project, the students recorded themselves using Screencastify. The video was complete with colonial funnies at the very end instead of bloopers. And she could share a copy of that with any of you, but she, the copy that they made had the students' last names on it, and she didn't want to share that, and so, but if you, if you want to see this, and I did see it, it's tremendous. The kids did an absolutely wonderful job. So that was a September program. In December, the plan is for the students to create and record their own plays, which, when you see, if you see the video, you will see they were into it, so. Then, the gifted and talented students have been working on a William &amp; Mary unit called Perspectives. The students are taking an in-depth look at the various perspectives a short story may have. Currently, the students are using a writer's notebook to brainstorm ideas and jot down ideas, so that in a couple of weeks, the students will be creating their own short stories. So that's just an example, another example of good things going on. Julie Orberg, Oberg, second grade at-home teacher. The second grade home learners are working on completing pumpkin book reports. This was an optional assignment. And so she attached a Google slide, and then I had it printed here, and you can come up and see it, but they had to create a pumpkin book character project. And if you aren't able to get a pumpkin, you may use whatever materials you have at home. And then there was a assignment, a pumpkin book report project, and they had to follow that. But then she sent some pictures of crazy things that the kids did with pumpkins. Here's the cat in the hat. And then the, a copy of the kind of book report she was using, and then a general picture of a variety of pumpkin faces. And they usually tied it to a book character, so here is Curious George. Anyway, that was just a sample of wonderful things coming through, as usual, our Jefferson staff, students, and I thought was good representation for us tonight.
Good to see you. Anything further? Pat, anything further?
No, that's it. Thank you, I'm sorry.
Okay. Athletic council, anything on that regard?
No, not at this time.
All right. Um, any correspondence received? Any discussion items from the board? And any transfers?
Nope.
Okay. Move on to the recognition of the public portion of the meeting. I do have one from Mary Hofstetter. Would you like to go first?
Let me know if I need to talk louder, if I can use my teacher voice, can everybody hear me, okay?
Yeah.
Um, due to this recent surge in the cases of COVID in our county and our district, I would like to respectfully ask the Board of Education to consider the health and safety of your employees, and especially your most vulnerable employees. These numbers will certainly rise with college students returning home and many families getting together for holiday gatherings. We all know that COVID is much more dangerous for certain populations with underlying health conditions. What most of you may not know is the high number of staff members who have these conditions. We have staff members who are cancer survivors, who are diabetics, who have severe chronic health conditions, staff members who are pregnant, staff members who are caring for elderly parents, or who have spouses, or children with immune-compromised conditions. In my case, my husband has chronic lymphocytic leukemia, and I'm scared to death every single day of bringing something home to him. As a teacher, I love my job and I love what I do every day, but I should not have to worry about risking my life or my husband's life every time I go to work. Also, I would ask you as board to communicate with the community to stress the absolute importance of following the CDC and Ohio Department of Health Safety protocols because the community and student activities outside of school are impacting the health and safety of the students and staff inside our buildings. I would also like to address last week's remote learning situation at the high school. Almost all teachers had virtually 100% attendance and classes ran very smoothly. As a staff, we have spent a great deal of time preparing since last spring, and it paid off last week with a very positive learning environment for our students. In contrast, today, we had about 70% attendance at the high school, and one teacher I talked to had less than 60% attendance. This does not include any of the A students that are learning remotely. I don't see that number improving over the coming weeks, so we can stay in school and teach to about 70% or less of our students, or we can go remote and teach to almost 100% of our students. In addition, our staff members who are out because they are quarantining would be able to teach their classes remotely on Zoom instead of hiring a substitute to sit in the classroom to replace them. One last comment in regard to waiting for guidance from the county health department. I know they are overwhelmed and very far behind on their calls and their contact tracing. One of our staff members who has a positive case in the immediate family is still waiting for that initial call to come from the health department. I don't think we should be relying on them. Several other schools have made the decision to go fully remote, and two more just in the last couple hours since I wrote this have announced they're going fully remote. For the health and safety of your students and staff, please take some time to seriously consider this option. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? All right. Move on to executive session, do we need any at this point?
No.
Um, report of the treasurer.
Okay. Under the report of the treasurer, item A is a board approval is requested to approve the minutes as listed, the regular meeting on October 20th, 2020, and the special work meeting, work session meeting on November 7th, 2020.
Need a motion?
Some move.
A motion by Scott, need a second?
Second.
Second by Joe. Take a roll call.
Mr. Ardery?
Yes.
Mr. Tradent?
Yes.
Dr. Hoysen?
Yes.
Mrs. Inman?
Yes.
Mr. Plousky?
Yes.
Okay, and item B, board approval is requested for the following items, the report of the treasurer, items one through four is listed.
Need a motion?
Some move.
Scott.
Yeah, motion by Scott, need a second?
Oh, then I'll second it.
Second Patty. Any questions on any of those items? If not, I'll take a roll call.
Okay, Mr. Ardery?
Yes.
Dr. Hoysen?
Yes.
Mrs. Inman?
Yes.
Mr. Tradent?
Yes.
Mr. Plousky?
Yes.
And move on to personnel?
Uh, board approval is requested for the following personnel items, as recommended by the superintendent, A through J.
Need a motion?
Some moved.
Motion Pat, need a second?
Second.
Second Scott. Any questions or commentary?
Uh, just of all, we do have a few retirements that we'd like to thank for their service. Tina is a custodian at the high school, she served 26 years. Uh, she'll be retiring, and Alberta, the secretary at Jeff L, has decided to wrap it up after 25 years. Uh, we did have a resignation for a bus driver. And then on the back, we are hiring Lori Miller as our head custodian to take over for Tina come the new year. Uh, other than that, it's about, that's about it.
All right. Any questions from the board? All right, now I've got a motion and a second, I'll take a roll call.
Mrs. Inman?
Yes.
Mr. Ardery?
Yes.
Dr. Hoysen?
Yes.
Mr. Tradent?
Yes.
Mr. Plousky?
Yes.
All right, we have no old business, new business. Board approval is requested for the following new business items, as recommended by the superintendent, one and two.
Some move.
And a motion by Scott? Need a second?
Second.
Second by Joe? Any questions or commentary there?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
On the number two enforcement of nutrition standards, it says we should have included here in that report, and it's not here.
Okay, all right.
So I don't think we can vote on that this time without that.
All right. We can...
So I guess, do I have to make a motion to rescind that for the moment, for the time?
Yeah, that'd be the best.
Okay.
So we want to have, uh, board approval is requested for the following new business item number one. Want to change the motion?
Yes, some move.
Got a motion on Joe, and a second here, a second from Scott?
Yep.
Okay, so this will be on just item number one. We will strike item number two at this time being, table it, I guess.
Table it, yep.
All right. Any questions or commentary on number one, Spire Institute Aquatic Arena? Same as we do every year, no cost for us?
Yeah, that's just, uh, they're a club, actually, but we have to sign them up with the Spire in order to use the pools.
Okay. I've got a motion, Joe, and a second, Scott, we'll take a roll call then.
Mr. Tradent?
Yes.
Mr. Ardery?
Yes.
Dr. Hoysen?
Yes.
Mrs. Inman?
Yes.
Mr. Plousky?
Yes.
All right, the communications you have, uh, that's all I got.
All right.
I have a question.
Yes.
On the, uh, staff school, is your health advisor or committee, are they advising at all on, on the...
Uh, right now, we're going through the health department. I speak with Ray, he answers my call every day, uh, every time I call him, either Ray or Jay. So even though I know they are behind as far as the tracing, uh, they accept our calls or they get right back to us. Actually, I called Jay yesterday, I had a question about a staff member that I didn't have the answer for. So everything right now goes through the health department. Every other week, we're on a Zoom call with superintendents in the health department.
One of the other county schools was talking, I've heard, was consulting with the local hospital directly as far as their status, is that something that, I don't know that should be a fact, but I'm not sure, we had an dialogue with the hospitals.
I mean, on the health, there's no one from, all the health departments are on the Zoom meeting. I've never heard anybody from the hospital being on there.
Okay.
None of the superintendents ever mentioned talking to the hospitals about it.
JC, what would be our procedure if it, if it came to either, you know, attendance being, being an issue with keeping the schools open, be it students or staff? Are you okay to just, are you okay to make that call? Do you have to convene us?
No, I can make the call, just like I did at the high school.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, the high school was a big spread. When you speak of attendance at the high school, it was like 70, well, 71, but 70% today, uh, but like tomorrow. Uh, by Thursday, Thursday, we get 28 of those students that were quarantined back, so the attendance will go up. The other buildings were good. Uh, Rock Creek was 86%. Jeff L was 89%. The junior high was 82%. So we had a district average of, of 82. So, you know, the one thing is the quarantine, you know, we had some, we have two students that, uh, we had to quarantine a lot of kids. Uh, you know, and the first round actually comes back on Thursday, so our attendance at the high school will jump by pretty much. Half of the quarantined kids will be back as what it was. Uh, so, I mean, we're ready, I think I warned the parents to be ready with childcare.
I, I got that real vote call, I heard that.
We made sure the teachers were, are ready and the students understand, so I mean, I think we're ready to go if we have to.
Okay.
Uh, you know, it would just come down to a, just a decision and, and make it go.
Okay, good. Okay, good, thank you.
Yes.
I, I just wonder what the criteria would be, I mean, you say that they're all, all the superintendents are on the call with the department, but are they all getting different advice?
No, they all hear the...
There's five districts who have gone fully remote already.
Everybody makes a decision based off of their own district, I mean, is really what it is. Uh, the health department was, and I think I, I put that out in an email to staff, when we met with the health department last Thursday, one of the superintendents asked several times if, if they would recommend that we close, and they said at this time, that wasn't a recommendation. Uh, the next day, that district's closed. So I think, you know, it comes down, everybody has their own reasoning behind it, uh, based off of their own numbers, whether it's student absence or teacher absence. You know, I know PV, uh, they had a lot of, a lot of positive cases today, and they decided to close their high school. Uh, so it's pretty much everybody's sort of individual. And the weird thing is, as of last week, PV was the least, uh, they had the least amount of cases out of anybody. And now after today, they made that decision, so.
Are they out for a period of time or indefinite? What was their...
I, I just know they closed the high school.
Okay.
Or they're going remote, is what they're doing with the high school.
I wonder if the TV, oh, he's good. TV schools, the high school starts tomorrow, they are remote until January 5th. Ellen Jr. Junior High starts next Monday, remote until January 5th.
Okay.
I have a question. So when we look at that dashboard online and we see our numbers are going up, and Comatting Valleys are nowhere near our numbers. And myself, as an art educator, I was a sixth-grade teacher all day last Friday. We're moving and shifting around as much as possible. I'm in 42 separate homerooms over a six-day period, and I found out today that I was in a classroom, that a teacher who just tested positive, she was in there on Thursday and I wasn't. So I'm wondering, are you going to add a column to the bottom of that dashboard that says "deaths"? Because I feel like that is approaching. And the teacher who just tested positive is also battling cancer. So I want to know, as a parent of children in this district, as an educator, who after 16 years of teaching, I still love what I do, when is it going to be enough? Are you going to pick and choose who's worth it? Or what about all of our students who are being raised by grandparents? We have a set of children at the elementary school who lost their father and they lost their mother three years ago due to the opioid epidemic, and they're being raised by grandparents who cannot afford to lose their life to the, I want to say reckless, I just, I am, and I'm scared to speak up because I'm afraid that I will become a target. And I speak for my 700-plus students and my 900-plus if they come back from remote, and my colleagues, because there is fear in everyone's eyes. We want to be there for the students, we know they learn when we're there, but I haven't slept in a buck of days. I'm terrified when I go to work. It's enough on a normal day, and it's just, and I know I'm not alone, you can see it. If you could walk in the building, you could see it in the teacher's eyes. We're all trying our best, and we're going to keep doing it because we do, we do because we love it, as Mrs. Hofstetter said. We do what we do because we love it, and we love these children. And we respect whatever decision you make, and we will be there and we will do it, but we're terrified. And maybe I don't speak for everyone, but we are.
I want to make an incorrect statement, and it's a shame that I have to hesitate to make this statement, but I'm going to make it. And this has nothing to do with whatever decision that we make. You both have said it, and you are correct, fear. Everybody is gripped with fear. It's because this thing is just so unknown, and it has such an effect on certain aspects of the population. Mrs. Hofstetter, I'm, I sympathize with you more than you know about your, um, your husband, and I understand why that would bother you, but I'm just going to say this, until we make a decision, and regardless of the decision that we make, um, even if we went all remote, there's still going to be fear, and I want to encourage everybody. The Bible says that God gives a peace that passes all understanding, and I pray and hope that every one of you will ask God to give you that peace until we get through all of this, because the fear and the anxiety, it makes it all worse.
Mr. Ardery, I do not know if that's what my...
About what? I'm not, I'm not, I'm not...
I don't want you to speculate that I don't have...
This is not a speculation, this is, it's just a reiteration and just encouraging people. If we go remote tomorrow, I would still encourage everybody to ask God to give them that peace because we need that.
But I'm concerned that it's almost as if you're washing over it, saying, "Don't be afraid, get that peace, don't be afraid," and still being put forward. In August and September, it was different. Beginning of October, it was different because we weren't having the numbers that we're having. As the numbers have gotten higher and more and more people are getting connected, people who we are in a room with are gone, not just to quarantine, gone because of a positive case, it's getting closer and closer and closer, and it's going to get to one of those most vulnerable, and there will be a death. And I am not a doom and gloom pessimistic person, I have faith and hope, and that's what I pray for every single day, but I am telling you that it is terrifying to feel that in every moment, one thing that you do, or one, one child that you don't recognize that they got too close to somebody else, or their hands are on their mask and in their mask, at every moment, there could be one swift, one swift move and somebody's going to get infected.
Well, that's why I would hope that you'd appreciate what I'm trying to say. You're, you're misreading it, I'm not discounting... I'm saying, no matter the decision, there's still fear in our society, and it's causing a lot of, it's causing a lot of stress, suicide is skyrocketing, and I'm just saying, this has nothing to do with the decision. I just believe we need peace that only God can give, and I believe God can give that peace. And so if that, if people get angry at me for that statement, I'm just trying to encourage people, that's all I'm trying to do, because I don't want my family going to bed with that fear, and I wouldn't want anybody to have to live with that. And I believe God can give a peace in it, and I just hope and pray that God gives all of you that peace, even beyond this, however long this thing goes out. That's a genuine statement, I, I would hope you wouldn't read it any other way.
Yeah.
A lot of teachers have come to make witnesses, and that's why I am here tonight. And they, here's what they've said, and I just want all of you to think about this. They have said, "Does our board not care about us like the other schools that have gone remote? We feel like they don't care about their staff." That's what, that's what many, many staff members have said.
Yeah, I mean, certainly we care about the students, we care about the community. I mean, certainly, um, we're not discounting any of that in terms of making our decisions about having school. There are people advocating that we shouldn't have ever started school, but we've put in how many weeks? You know, a lot of these schools you're talking about that are going remote now never started in person, you know? Edgewood came back for... You know, Edgewood came back for four or five days and they went back. I mean, so we're looking at what is happening in the community? Where's the spread coming from? What's the impact of putting these kids online, being remote? Education online or remote, by comparison to in-person, it's terrible. It's just terrible. I mean, I see it with my kids. They're not getting education online or remote. It, it, it's minimal at best. And I think we, we've done a much, much, much better job than when we got thrown into it in March. It's just not good. That's just, that's just the reality. And so when we look at cases and we look at hospital stations and we look at deaths and we look at spread, the governor's not indicated it's coming from schools. The governor and the, and the Department of Health is not indicated that schools need to close down. No one's delivering that message. You know, so I understand that people are seeing it a certain way. They see the data in a certain way. They have their own personal circumstances. I get that. I appreciate that. And I feel for those situations. But collectively, we're tasked with running a school and educating children. At the same time, keeping those children safe and keeping our staff safe. Obviously, you know, it's been a much more challenging situation in the past, you know, ten months than ever before. You know, when there were a lot of school shootings going on. We didn't shut down schools because being in school was going to be dangerous, but we got pleased for that. You know, so we're looking at where, you know, what, what's happening with the death rates? What's happening with hospitalization? You know, cases are way, way up, but the death rate is way, way down. So we have to consider what the impact is going to be. And we're looking at that. So, I mean, I, I feel for everyone's individual situation. But I also know that keeping kids at home is also not good for those kids. Their kids are going to be kept in abusive situations, kids are going to be kept in neglectful situations. We have to consider that as well. Plus the fact that we already missed, you know, you know, a year's worth of education, I'm sure at least, that we're tasked to make sure these kids are getting. And, and they're not getting it online. It just simply is not the case.
I would take exception to that comment. Last spring, and this, we have prepared much better than we did last spring. But last spring, I got all my eight kids ready to take a test and I had a seventy-three percent passage rate. And that was higher than, than the most averages. So I would take exception and I'm sure many other of our teachers would take exception to that as well.
Well, I think, I think you have them all year through March. I think if you had them all year online, I don't think you'll be anywhere near that number. I just, I just don't believe-
I see, I see your point with that, Jim.
I, I mean, I have, they're learning in that environment. It's substantially better than it was in the spring, but it's not good. I mean, that's just the reality.
I don't think anyone's disputing in-person education is a thousand times better. I think it's a lot, I think it's a lot more comfortable for teachers and for students.
Absolutely. We, we have, we have been thoroughly excited to be able to be here with our students for the first nine weeks into the second nine weeks. And I think we've been tremendously happy to be able to be with our students for those days. However, the, the, the spread was not in our community at that time. It is definitely in our community at this time. It is definitely spreading through our schools, through our kids. And now is the time where we have to make the decision, well, do we, do we keep playing poker? Do we keep gambling and saying, hey, let's get another weekend? Let's get another weekend? Keep adding up just because we want to try and get another week in rather than playing kind of a, you know, being happy with what we got, ultimately not risking our staff members' health or their families' health? Those types of things, I, I think are, are things we need to really think about there.
I can't speak for everybody, but for myself, I want to say I've never looked that, that way as just keep gambling. You don't ever want to gamble on anybody's health. I, I look at schools-
As Ms. Hoster said, that's the way that a lot of staff members feel.
Well, I know they feel that way, but that's, that's not true. At least, I know it's not from my perspective. I look at, at school the same way I do law enforcement, same way I do the doctors and nurses. It's an essential part of our community. It's essential. And I, I think all of you feel the same way, obviously. And that's not saying pro or against remote. But I, I, I just want to go on record and say, I, I don't want to be accused of saying we don't care and let's just squeeze one more weekend because that's not true. I think it's, we all know how important school is and there, there, there is a, a small caveat that we haven't talked about and how many parents won't be able to go to work? You know, I think that's something, we, we, when we weigh these things, you weigh all of it. And I wish, I wish there was an easier way personally. And this is not, again, taking a position either way. But I, I, I just think it's such a tough situation and I think there's a lot more than just one aspect to consider. But it's not that no one cares and it's not that we want to gamble one more week. That's not it at all. It's just that there's, there's more sides than just one and, and you have to weigh all of those and make the very best decision that you can. You know, I think J.C. had an amazing plan together. Can I ask those of you that are here, are you not, do you, this is an honest question. Do you feel the setup in the classrooms right now is not, is not really a safe setup? And I'm being honest. I want to know what your view of those setups are? With the desks and the, you know, the masks and all those things, you, and I don't know if any of them have Plexiglas or not, but do you feel that's not, do you feel there's anything that you can do in the classroom that would make it better?
It's not so much the setup, it's just that no matter, even with the setup, they're still spreading.
Right.
So it's still spreading. And I, I mean, as Ms. Hoster, or as more of all shared with Mrs. Edman, the, the students are doing relatively well with the masks. But there, it's teacher by teacher, I know, because I go to all forty-two home rooms, some are more prone to keeping it down when they're supposed to be just taking a drink break and then they have it down and they have it down longer and there's a little bit more frequent reminders. But all I can do is just like touch my nose, say their name, touch my nose and they know to cover up. It's not, not like they're ripping it off and refusing to wear it, but I think that the most concerning part is that they're still spread. They're still being spread within the building. They're still spread. And whether it's coming from the community and coming into our school or vice versa, the measures that we have in place, they were great in August, September, October, but now it's, it, it, I have a cousin who worked, who's a P.A. and she said, you might as well just, you know, like not wash your hands for five, five weeks because you're going to get whatever. But because, it doesn't matter now, it's so, so spread, it's still random.
Well, and, and I think we as a board need, need to really consider because if we are waiting for the governor to shut us down, he is not going to do that. He has, he has pretty much directed individual schools to take assessment of their own situation and do that. So he's not going to shut us down. And, and I will say, I don't know that death, that cases and death is how we should be looking at this only because there are long-term effects of COVID-19 that, that aren't deaths. But there, there are long-term, there are anticipated long-term effects, heart damage, lung damage, never getting, there's a percentage of people, when, when you lose that sense of taste and smell, you don't get it back permanently. So, I mean, it's not to just look at cases and deaths, it's beyond that. So I'm just asking that we consider that. You know, deaths, right? Deaths from COVID have come way down and that's not as significant as what some of the potential long-term complications are going to be.
So I ask that we keep that in mind.
Yeah, understood.
I, I would like to say though, I mean, I, I don't think we're waiting for a death in order to, I mean, I, I think that's not something that, you know, we didn't bring that up, first of all. Second of all, when you look at the overall picture and you know what happened, you know, when you're getting people calling you, telling you and explaining where they became positive, it's not over, it's not in the school that they're telling us this. Okay? For example, we had the one case, we have twenty-eight kids that are out. Over the next few days, they'll come back. Now, we know they were around someone that was positive. That's why we quarantined them. And none of them have gotten it yet. So, I mean, we're looking at the whole picture. We're not just looking at numbers, okay? And I mean, and, and then we consult with the health department, who, who in my mind is the expert as far as what we should do. And that's how we're making our decision, so.
On the note of the health department, just, just want to throw it out there that I think we have recognized that they are taxed beyond their, perhaps their capacity, so for them, for that guidance.
Well, it's not waiting. I mean, if I, if I called them right now, I'll talk to them before I go to bed tonight.
Okay.
So it's not a matter of waiting. Yesterday, I had a case I didn't know the answer to, so I called Jay Becker's cell phone. He answered the phone. He gave me the answer. I called the person back. I mean, so they are taxed, but they are answering our questions, they are answering our calls or our emails right away. I mean, so I'm not asking them questions and waiting a week. Now, the contact tracing, yeah, they're behind. That's why we're doing it here locally. Okay? We're giving out the letters. Okay? That came because when we had the basketball player, we wanted to make sure that the parents knew that those kids need to be quarantined, that those kids, you know, the, the health department getting to them a week later wasn't going to help us. So the health department has worked with all the schools and we now have the power to give out the quarantine letter from the health department until they get around to it. Now, they could change it six, seven days later or five days later. But initially, we have that power to say, here, here, you were contact traced, you were too close, you were whatever, and here it is. So we do have that. So the idea that the, the health department is really taxed and they're not answering our questions is, there's no truth to that at all.
I just want to reiterate, I'll say no more, just, I just hope you, you'll change your thinking in that we don't care. Because that's not it at all. It's not, you know, it's, I, I, you know, I, I weigh both balances and I, I'm not opposed to either or really. My kids, they, they don't do so well at home, but, you know, if it became down to we needed to do it, I'm not, you know, opposed to it. I just want you to just try and understand that there's a lot more to weigh and we just try to really weigh all of that. I think we all care. I think we, I mean, we've all lost people. I've lost people, you know. It's not something we take lightly. So I'm just asking you just not to think that. When I talk about prayer and God's peace, that's not saying just ask God for peace and keep working. If we went remote tonight, I would still tell you that because I don't like to see people living with that anxiety and that fear. And I just want, you know, I hope God can help us all through all of this in the end. And I will pray for your families too.
I will say too that, you know, that's like almost a stab in the heart to say that we are a board that doesn't care for you. Because observing it from the inside and watching all that has gone on to try to prevent a problem within our schools and try to help you who are in our schools has been forefront. It's just been out there all the time, to the point of the wonderful little thermometers that talk to you. I mean, those were huge expenses that we don't have, that we used because we wanted you to be safe. And our hearts are, you know, our hearts are with you. Having been a teacher, I, I don't know because I've not been in your position, but I can imagine what it would be like. And, and yet I know that our students need you. And they truly need you in person, having dealt with so many for so many years to see how the decisions that they made were because of the teachers that they had. It, it is just a very powerful, powerful piece. But please don't ever think that we don't care for you. That is just an absolute error because we do.
We families need us too. I know the students need us, but our families need us too.
All right, anything further from the board?
One thing, I know that, you know, we're going to probably hear more from the governor even this week. And I still think that, that there's going to be some kind of directive that is going to change our course at some point. I mean, it seems like we're anticipating some kind of a, a move to remote learning statewide at some point, Thanksgiving to Christmas, but who knows? Like, like Patty said, that'll happen. But I was thinking about after listening to him today, I wonder if we should consider maybe not setting a date now, but should we even be looking at maybe starting a work session to start looking at even, you know, the thick of this, the coronavirus, what, you know, what, what do we have to do to best get through the next couple of months? What, what's the rest of the year learning wise look like? I don't know if we want to maybe consider that for December or look at that in the future. I just feel like we might benefit from more than one meeting a month at some point here, even if it's only for the next couple of months. Things just moving so fast and changing so much, I wonder if we should add a meeting or maybe wait till after his next address and decide if we need one.
I mean, I'm certainly open to, I mean, getting together and, you know, having a discussion and getting an update from administration on, you know, where we're at, where we're going, you know, what's working, what's not. I mean-
I mean, he, he has methodically laid out plans in the last, I, I really feel like something else is coming, so it might be premature to, to set another meeting right now, but maybe that's something that we need to monitor and consider in the next week or so. We need another one coming up.
Okay. Anything further? If not, let's take a look at our next, our regularly scheduled board meeting, set right now for December fifteenth. Be six o'clock here in the auditorium. There are no issues with that time. We'll set that one. And I know we need to discuss the January one. I'd like to do that now at this meeting. January meeting would be scheduled for January nineteenth, but I believe we have to have a meeting from a budgetary standpoint before that. Is that correct, Patty?
State law, we have to have the organizational meeting before the fifteenth or by the fifteenth. So I don't, we need to pick a date before the fifteenth or earlier.
So you do the twelfth?
So the twelfth would be the week before, which I think it's usually easiest to keep on the same day and time. So is there any objection to a January twelfth meeting at six o'clock at this point?
I'm okay with it.
You're okay then? Okay. And that, that will give us a couple of days leeway if something comes up. So that would be Tuesday, January twelfth, and that would be at 6:00 P.M. and here in the auditorium. Obviously, the subject will change depending upon how the conditions on the ground here change and as things come up and emerge, so. All right. Calendar of events.
Yeah, the calendar is there, but you got to remember all sports are scheduled to change. The governor did say sports continue as planned today, but I'm sure ours will be changing. The concerts, both the band and the choir will be virtual concerts. They will not be live, okay? So I'm not sure what their plan is as far as when they will release them, if they'll keep with the time that was on the calendar or not. And then there's the breaks on that.
All right. Any need for executive session at this point?
Uh, no.
No? Okay. And I'll take a motion for adjournment.
So move.
A motion by Scott. A second? Second, if anybody wants to go home?
Everybody wants to stay.
Oh, I'll second.
Second by Patty. So I've got a motion by Scott and a second by Patty. I'll take a roll call.
Mr. Ardery?
Yes.
Dr. Hoysen?
Yes.
Mrs. Edman?
Yes.
Mr. Hurdette?
Yes.
Mr. Plaskowski?
Yes. And we are adjourned.